Anything you want us to know, it looks like it's pretty self-explanatory.
It is, yeah, unless you have any questions.
A lot of zeros there, Bill.
Lot of zeros. I'm right at about $740,000 coming into the account now for veterans and their families since I've been here, so I'm shooting for a million bucks.
Does that go back to civil war?
No, not that one. Getting closer.
You're bad.
Close.
Can we bring any questions to Dr. Bill's budget?
One thing you might note on that, that this is the first year since I've been here where we haven't had any claims for grave markers. It's been from barriers but not markers so far. That's unusual.
There's really no way to determine that.
No, you never know.
Okay, well, if no one has anything, we appreciate your coming.
I do.
That was easy work.
Huh?
That was easy.
Next on the agenda is library non-binding. And there's a separate sheet for that, I think.
It's long.
This is one of these long sheets right here.
Yeah, it says library budget estimate from top.
All right, Dr. Bill.
I was just gonna say our state growth this year was 2.8% and our budget was 2.75, so we're under the roof, so we're starting to work that well. Thank you.
So this evening, you want us to look at this data and do what?
That could be our budget.
How long do we have to look at it? I've been a little stickler on just getting information and sitting down and saying we like it or not. We really need to have it ahead of time.
Well, I'd rather do it on August 1st.
It was turned into my office, and I apologize, I...
So is there any problem with us looking or doing that for next week's meeting? Any problems with that?
We're, we have deadlines for our DLG up, so our board is supposed to adopt our budget at the next fourth meeting on October 8th.
October 8th?
We need to get next Tuesday for a Raker meeting.
With the non-binding review, my understanding is as long as we're under the growth quotient, there really isn't a whole lot of discussion. It's only over the growth quotient that you can make changes.
Yeah, it's probably just a courtesy.
Exactly.
Instead of grabbing a rubber stamp. But if you don't mind, it sounds like we're on a meeting before October 8th, right?
Yes, we need to. The statutory requirement is October 1st for non-binding review. So we need to have a, we need to have non-binding reviews between now and October 1st. It's a new law signed in by our governor in spring this year.
And so next week would be okay?
Yes, we can have, we can have a meeting next week and...
We did have a meeting next week.
We did have, right, yes.
Is there a possibility of having the last year's numbers here something compared to? This tells me nothing. There's no comparison to last year or anything. It's just once. It'd be nice to have some comparatives that you help with. How much everything's going up?
Sharif Linda used to tell us that when it went on to the state, that the state usually slashed it in some places, so we didn't want to cut it much of any on a local level because it was gonna be cut later on. Is this still true?
I think it depends on the tax levies. And again, it's my understanding that as long as we're under the growth quotient, you don't, you don't change anything in the budget, only if we're over the growth quotient.
You're correct, we don't make changes, but we can make recommendations that the state sees and can apply if they need to or if they choose to. Otherwise, there would be no reason for us to even look at it. It's just pass through. We have other units that we can bind in online, and some of those recommendations have been made and changed by the state when they want to.
So is that okay?
So you're saying you want me to come back next week?
I'm hearing, I'm hearing two things. Amy had a question, I don't know if they got answered, and then the second one is, we'll just, we'll put this on the agenda for next week's meeting, and then we can just do it now.
And do you want me here at that meeting? That's what I'm asking. Or is it just you want the council to review it then, or do you want me here then?
It could be yours. If somebody had a question, it'd be nice for you to be here.
Okay, so what's the day and the time of your meeting?
It's, um, next Tuesday, September 7th.
At 7:00.
We have solid weights at 7:00.
If you give, if you give the order of a great need to work around, and a closer timeframe on the agenda.
Yes, we have, yes.
Yeah, that's already out, I'm trying to be precise on my budget.
We have a presentation from RQAW and Arcatura and PNSI on the proposed courthouse can jail renovations or perhaps a building can be jailed. Those considerations are big, there's a possibility at the next meeting.
So we can do the library first or...
We need to, yes, because they have their presentation material.
Yeah, that's good, I think.
Right up there.
Yeah, go right away, so we don't have to hold up.
Okay. Is that okay?
How many assistants do you have in that salary of 587?
We have a total of 32 staff, and I think there are 17 full-time and 15 part-time.
And then I have one other question, and we can talk to Linda before that. Where is your computer? I don't know if you still have, do you still have an employee or do you contract that out? How do you do your...
Our IT.
Your IT? Did you see changes in that recently?
We do, we do have an IT specialist, yes.
And where does that in this budget?
It would be listed in salary of assistants, because all of the staff are in salary of assistants other than myself.
And how much is that IT?
How much is his salary? I don't know, I'll talk to him.
Can you bring that back for sure? Thank you.
Is that a full-time person?
Yes.
And they take care of both Tipton and Windfall locations?
Yes.
Any other questions? Is it possible to get different person?
Yes.
You know, if you want to, I would suggest maybe email. Because if you can, if you can email it, or I don't know if Greg even wants to scan it in, but if you want to email it out with our packets, because we always get information for the Tuesday meeting before the meeting, and then we would be able to review it. So when we come in and sit down on Tuesday, we, if we had questions, or even maybe we could get back to you and say, is there something you can look up, so that we both would be able to be more productive? Because it's, I just, it's hard to sit down and look at something instantly and be able to make a decision as you like it, you don't like it, is there something that you're not familiar with? So that's, and that's the reason I just, you know, we've seen it before, and not just a non-binding review, but it just helps.
Does this budget on Windfall also?
Yes.
Okay. I hear a lot of things about Windfall, Tipton of course, but Windfall also.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you very much, I really appreciate it. The next one is the health.
Let me get that.
And we might have a favorite song.
It's in that second clip, showing how big that is.
Oh yeah, it is real big.
It's in the second?
All the pre-pages?
It's in the second clip?
Why is it that clip on? Why do we have that clip on?
This is all our special segments.
Oh, on special?
It's in that second clip that we have, not size.
So you can't find it, you're examining that real quick?
You can't find it, so you missed it real fast.
The same with the highway, Brad?
I don't know, it's the other, it's the other clip.
I always went through that clip.
It's the very first one, Scott.
Oh. Who looks at that first? Okay.
Who looks at that first?
Anything we, you want to bring to our attention?
Just a couple things, everything's pretty much the norm that I always do. I am trying to increase Christina's sum. Last year, I didn't feel like, we didn't go as high last year because she was kind of a new transition of her taking over the whole sanitarian role. So I feel like she's doing a good job and would like to try to increase that. And then Nolan is still under the assistant sanitarian to help out when needed with her when she's gone or whatnot, and so I reduced that, like $5,000.
So has Nolan retired?
I'm sorry.
Has he retired? Is he part-time or...
No, he is not retired, nor is he part-time.
So we're still funding two full-time positions?
Correct.
And is there another area where salaries picked up for him?
He gets a chunk for it, the rest of his comes out of the emergency grant because he does a lot of the emergency preparedness stuff. So we get that emergency grant, which is like $20,000. And a lot of counties use that money like we are and help supplement that salary for that individually, that is the emergency preparedness.
But you also have some emergency preparedness director here.
A $10,000.
Right, because that's the 10th, that's the offset of that.
But that's new, this year, proposed.
And is that for the...
I thought they would change, I thought that was kind of like last year when all that was going on, and I thought we put that line in there last year.
We're showing in 11, we expended $4,500. In 12, the budget was zero. And for 13, you're proposing $10,000. So we're showing that as a $10,000 new figure. And but this is in health, this is, right, this year's are coming from some of the location.
Well, that emergency preparedness, I don't know now, I don't know that it should be on here because it's through a grant, it's not county money.
Yeah, so...
But I think maybe I might have questioned that. I thought it was great on if it should or shouldn't be on here, because, I mean,
Probably shouldn't be.
It's Nolan's payroll, pardon his payroll, but yet it comes from that emergency grant that I put that in there, into this line, I guess, this appropriation. So do I not need to put it on there? So I guess I thought I did have to because it was in an appropriation line of payroll.
Is it, it is, it should be, and is it in, is it an appropriation line, a revenue line within this fund? I mean, it can be a grant going into this fund.
Correct.
It just needs to be earmarked. So is that how it goes in to be there?
Because I did, what, what happens is there's like a portal and we fill his hours to that, and then we get that money back, and then when that money comes in, it's a great to be others' office, then it's appropriated into that line.
And that full $10,000 comes back?
Correct.
Okay, I think we could add, put on here like grant. And then it would match up with the revenue side of the grant.
Is that fine?
Okay.
Good.
It just showed $10,000.
Yeah, and I kind of forgot we did that, and I think I minded that because of the discussions and stuff from last year.
Correct.
For payroll, it would be easier too, because if it has to come out in another, we have to create a fund just for this.
Create another place, and then it just gets crazy, so I think that's probably why I did that.
Payoffs come out two or three places.
Right. And then I decreased $100 on the dues, because we only have currently one thing that we really pay dues on, so I increased that. But besides that, everything else is pretty much the same that we've been using.
Do you still own the trailer? Did you give that to EMI?
I still own that trailer. It's going to be the emergency preparedness slash mobile command station, so it can be used both ways. And why I did that was because we've had the trailer for six years, eight years?
Eight years, how long?
Six, eight years, and never used it for anything. I mean, early. So the fire department, with combination fire department of Pat, Chuck, and Chuck Bell approached me and asked if we could make it a mobile command and then also be able to use it for emergency preparedness if we needed it. And so I agreed, so that it would be more usable for the county. I guess they had it at the Pork Festival, did a nice job, and I, I told them it did a very nice job with the weather and stuff there, so...
I toured it.
Did you?
Started more.
Got to pull tour.
It's really nice, I really like it. So yeah, it's still my trailer, but we're trying to utilize it in the county the best we can, and I felt like it wasn't being utilized, it was just sitting. So... Any other questions?
I maybe just have one.
Sure.
About the sanitarian, maybe in October if you think about it, but I know we, we had Nolan one time, and Christina kind of worked in that, I know there was a discussion.
Been a discussion everywhere.
Every, every year.
Yeah. Last year, we found a discussion.
Because it was the understanding when it presented us that she would be doing, not that we would end up with two full-time sanitarians, and I think that's something we've really got to address, because we're getting quite some money in.
And well, one thing that I just thought of is that if there were, if that is still your intention, if, I mean, originally the intention was just to keep Act 1 and work Huron, and Nolan was supposedly going to retire, but I think it'd be helpful for the citizens if, if you could maybe just make a few bullet points and say, how is our health department better because we have two? If you could do that, that would probably help you and help us understand that, so it would just...
But does Nolan actually do?
See, this is my kicker, so you guys can help me here. Nolan is titled, and I love to entitle, as the assistant sanitarian, for a couple different reasons, I think. I mean, this is why. If Christina is gone or on vacation or like, she had a baby last year, so she was gone, so he stepped into that role. If she still has questions, he's still very vital with knowledge to be able to help her. Number three, we used to have, when Nolan was a sanitarian, we still had that assistant sanitarian, which was Larry Beard. I don't know if anybody...
That was sanitarian relief.
Right.
As a line.
That did like relief, like during festivals, or like if Nolan was on vacation, maybe come in and do septics and that kind of thing. So that's kind of why I left it there, but in the same breath, Nolan's main focus and what he does a majority of the day is emergency preparedness, is to keep the plan up to date, make changes. The grant that we get every year, we have to meet this, 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 and this. So I mean, he's busy doing, I'm not saying he's sitting down there just looking through books. I mean, with that grant, there's all these requirements that we have to meet, that then he completes those, so we can get that, that fundage. So with that being said, I mean, he does some sanitarian stuff, but not full-blown. So, yeah. Does that kind of make a little more sense, maybe? I mean, I can still do what you're asking me to, but that's kind of why I went the direction I did. And again, I know we've had this discussion for the last couple of years. No, no. So I don't know that we need to make it more under the relief part of it versus the, I don't know. Like we had Larry, not under payroll, I don't know. I guess I would love you guys to send that in the direction.
So we've got till October. I mean, we'll be looking at this in October 10th, and that's when we'll be making...
Yeah, sure. I don't have a problem getting information for you, not at all.
Oh, any other thing?
But you know, again, just stay on that subject for just a second, and this has happened a couple of years, as far as looking through it, but the health board has been involved with it, so it's not like, this is more of a long-term plan, but it's, it's developed very slowly, but the health board is aware of all that.
Correct.
So they, they've seen it and have approved it or are okay with whatever's happening.
Correct.
So, but for us, we've seen it a couple times, and it's like, we just want to be sure we're accurate.
Okay. No other questions? Do we move on to drug-free community?
That's me. 142? That is, that money comes from anybody that's been arrested that pays fines, comes from Charpsville and Tipton County and the city courts, and it goes into that fund. It has decreased substantially in the last few years. We used to get anywhere from $11,000 to $12,000, and it's around $7,000 or $8,000. We are going to meet with Greg soon, just to see, and we need to make sure that the monies are going into the right place. We have a board meeting on Tuesday, and usually we get $12,000, and they have asked to be up to $15,000. It's not, I don't want to say it's not county money, but the reason being is because there's a lot of treatment things that we don't, we're not able to get covered. So that's the reason that they want to up what we take out of that budget.
Do we have a copy of that, Hannah? Oh, I don't, all right. Are you still in the four categories?
Discretionary, criminal justice, treatment, and...
So if you went with four categories, where would you put the other $3,000 that would be potentially new treatment?
No, it'll all, it'll all be discretionary. We're going to leave $3,000 in discretionary, which is, that is Monica's stipend, and then the other 12 will continue to be in the other three areas, which would be $4,000, if we use it instead of three. But every year, we run out of money as far as treatment. We've had trouble in the past getting law enforcement to use their money, and we've had to, you know, not turn it back, but, you know, not use it. But now I've got both chief and sheriff on board, and they're doing better. So I have no trouble using treatment, we have no trouble using the discretionary, and the prevention is where we're really short.
Sure, is that where the increase is going to go, the prevention?
Oh, no, it'll go, it'll be $3,000 in discretionary, $4,000 in law, $4,000 in treatment, and $4,000 in prevention.
Those three, $3,000.
Right now, they do, they're all four.
All right, any questions?
Do we know if disperse any of the money without a board? Monica Greer has had a woman on the job. Number 10. Monica is his...
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next thing is the WRC planning committee. Derek, can I ask how that is?
It's a long, it's a long form.
Long form.
That's the... Well, Chuck and I talked last night, he did not think that he had submitted the budget in time to be processed.
He did not.
So I told him then...
It'll have to be in additional appropriation later or...
And he knew that. So he, he said, when, they're not sure they want to spend any money this next year anyway, so if they do, they'll come to the council for additional appropriation process.
I asked him, have you prepared something so we, so he could have a look at it, but he said that was just kind of a rough draft.
They, they, Chris called me about that LIPC for a day, and I guess, and I think that was last year.
It did.
And there was expenditures made, so we really need to get a count on that, too.
Well, Chuck, Chuck, and like I said last night, he told me that he did not think he had it in in time to be advertised. He's aware that...
He didn't.
If they have anything next year, life insurance appropriation, but he did not really want to spend anything that he knows of right now.
I wonder if you told me they spent last year?
I thought it was $4,800 for...
They had, they had their plan approved, or they had to get processed.
But we didn't have a budget. So that he's trying to get the right thing in this year.
How much more?
Not very much.
About $16,000, I think. Memory serves me, it wasn't very much anymore.
It gets a grant?
No, it comes from companies that have MSDS for poisonous or dangerous chemicals. These are the, the high end of the dangerous chemicals. There's a fee that's collected for filing that, and we get a portion out of those fees, and that's how that's funded. It's not very much money at all.
It used to be you had to file for two, I wonder if they're applying now?
I don't, they're applying.
I know when I was secretary, that had to be filed for.
I show $1,302.78. $1,302.78.
Okay, next thing on the, is circuit court, that's page 25 of the general fund.
First of all, I want to thank Greg for rescheduling, and I've been on account of the state judges' conference the last two days, and so it was really helpful and helpful. I don't know if there's anything out of the ordinary in my budget this year, I think I kept it pretty much the same as last. I might have increased a couple of things just slightly, but I think, you know, we have enough to operate on. A lot of times, we spend most of what, what we, what we're appropriating, but I don't think, you know, rarely do we have to. Maybe at the end of the year, we'll switch things around a little bit, but I don't think we really had to do any additional appropriations, just changing around, so I think what you've given us has been reasonable, and, you know, in terms of staying within our budget. I do have one apology to make to that, before you yell at me.
It's not in there?
The one thing I forgot to put in there was that we did the additional appropriation for, and since it wasn't in here, I didn't, I don't even know what the number is. You know, it probably has that, but I didn't ask for appropriation for that. And so, and I don't even remember what we put in there for that part for the rest of this year. What we're talking about is the money to preserve the records at the historical society, which, which again, has turned into a big nightmare that was totally never intended, so I apologize to you all for that, too. When Vamita and I made that agreement to give those records to the historical society, we never, in all the negotiations and contracts we signed, Vamita and I both signed, they signed that, there was never any mention that they would ever ask us for a dime. They said they would keep the records for us, and we agreed to allow them to keep them in a climate-controlled facility, and that was the agreement we made. We never told them, we never asked them to do this work they're doing, which I think is great. We never asked them to do anything other than keep them, which they agreed to do, and so to the extent that that's cost the county money, I'm sorry, but we... And so to the extent that that's cost the county money, I, I'm sorry, but we never, Vamita and I, either one ever saw that coming. So, uh, I'll, I'll take the one for that because I was part of it.
We'll find us a bumper.
I was part of it and now they have them and now they're doing good work on them and they want to get paid for them and so, um, we'll find a way to pay for it.
You know, I think they, they talk like it was going to be an ongoing project, maybe it's something where we need to have to do another presentation, have a judge here determine.
Well, and, and...
Not far do you really want to go with that?
Right, and it started a while back when there was some talk about trying to get all the records out of that records room because of the leak on the floor and the danger that the floor might cave in and all that. I, I think that was, personally, I think that that was a little bit overblown. Uh, I, you know, we have moved a lot of the things around and there are things out there anymore and the trash is gone, a lot of it. And so, I mean, I know the building's old, but it's pretty sturdy and I don't think that floor is going to cave in because it has some file cabinets in there. But even, and people do use them, I mean, people come into the clerk's office and we do get into those old files. But in a, in a room that isn't climate-controlled, they're right, I mean, those old papers aren't going to disintegrate over time. So I know you didn't want me to come here and talk about that, but it is something we might want to look at in the future.
But by statute, we have to keep it.
They have to be kept forever. It doesn't say how they have to be kept forever. Doesn't say you have to be able to read them or that they can't fall apart. But that makes sense. We cannot destroy any of those papers ever. And so, that's one of those laws that they pass and then they don't tell you how to do it. Like, how many buildings are they going to build us to keep them? I mean, imagine a big county and all the, every court document they've ever had filed, they have to keep forever.
So is that sort of yours man or is that now ongoing?
We have not given them any more documents since the, since the ones that we transferred to them before.
But, but we still have documents sent from that point of what you're saying?
We, and those are what, up to nineteen hundred maybe or nineteen ten, something like that. So yes, all those other years since, and they're there, are upstairs.
Are upstairs.
Yes.
Wow.
So we thought we were doing a good thing and then... Like so many times you do that, it didn't work out exactly the way that I was... But it was, it was well intentioned. So anyway, I'll undertake any other questions you have on my budget. Um, the regular budget, I have the other increases for the staff as I just said. The other two, the jury payment is the same every year. If I was out here, it could be twenty thousand dollars and we never use it all. That money comes in from the state, it doesn't, it doesn't county general money. It's money generated by fees. And, uh, and I think the last time I saw a balance on that account, we had thirty or forty or fifty thousand dollars in it. We always ask to be able to spend twenty up every year. And if we had a lot of trials, we may have to do more, but I don't think we ever would. And, uh, the guardian ad litem budget, that's going, that's something I'm probably after the first of the year going to come and have to come back and talk to you all about. But we're just in the planning stages on that. So for now, I'm not asking for any changes in the way it is. Do we have that one?
There are the extra.
Yeah, there are next to it.
Are you still considering getting a program?
Yes, what we, what we did this past year was we tried to, um... I had someone go through the training and through Howard County and we tried to use, go through Howard County. And they did the training, which was wonderful, but in the long run, it didn't work out. And so I'm, uh, we're, we're in the process of hopefully in October scheduling a meeting with the state CASA director, his name is Leslie Dunn. The meeting with her about starting our own program. And so that will, we, we are required to appoint a guardian ad litem or a court board special advocate, which is CASA, to every case where children are removed from the home by the department of child services. I have to appoint a CASA in every case. They are volunteers, so they don't cost any money. However, under the statute, if you have a program, you have to pay a director. And the director assigns the CASAs. And then what we would do, if I had to pay a director, which wouldn't be much, it would just be very few hours a week or a month. But we would need, I would need to have some space in the courthouse. I would need to have, uh, some operating money, more than probably what we have, some salary for, for that person. Then we could train our own volunteers and we could ask the community, you know, people, retired people, people that have free time that want to help out with children to be CASAs. Yeah, it really is. And I think Mary Harper's helped me, Angela Shelton has helped me, a few other people have helped me with it, which, you know, which I appreciate a lot. And, and Mary Harper's is interested in continuing with that. And so is Angela to the extent that she has time, but we'd like to get more volunteers since we have to appoint them on every case. And I don't think that you all have any idea or that the public has any idea in how many cases that the D C S is involved with in our county right now. And so it's sad, but it's necessary and so we have to make sure those children are properly represented.
I know some counties like, well, Anderson, CASA's, it's huge, you know, it's a full-fledged nonprofit organization there. It's, you know, they're raising funds all the time. It's a wonderful...
I think that what we're going to start with, since we're a small county and we're just a startup, is we're going to start just having the CASA be an arm of the court and not have it be a nonprofit. And then as it grows, then we would look into spinning it off into a, into a board, into a nonprofit where they raise their own funds. We don't really want to start out with that because it's so hard, you know, in a small county, it seems like the same people are on all the different boards and, you know, the same people are interested in, in being involved. And, and we just tap out people in terms of who's willing to be on a board right now. So for now, we're going to start out with a court program and hopefully expand it. But I'm a little bit ahead of myself, probably not until after the first of the year. So I would, I just submitted the same budget that we always have for that.
All right, any?
I'm glad you moved in that direction.
You'll hear more.
Any questions for talk about, any other budgets you provided for? Circuit court?
All right, thank you. Sorry, I forgot that one.
That's all right.
All right.
Okay, down the successor.
I got you. Level one, uh, it's gonna... Good luck with all the, the witnesses for the refugees.
Page, uh, page nine.
Did you notice I did ask for another deputy? What I'd like to see eventually, I don't know if you guys can move this year, but, um, as you know, some of the problems I've been having this year, they're going to need a reassessment now, that's going to be, uh, we second rule. When it's going to be over three years, you do them like the top third of the same, you know? And it's just going to be a ruling. Well, we had a bad experience and we thought maybe if we could get another person in there, maybe we could use a modern house. Be, uh, uh, what would be hard to do is commercial. Most of these back happen with every, every day. So, but I asked for a second deputy, but I also have money in the reassessment for a reassessment clerk. I think we could cut the, you know, cut one down. If you don't give me that, I'd like to have money in the reassessment clerk. But if you give me this, I still probably need some part-time, not as much money. So that's why we asked, I kind of, I think we asked, I forgot like third person off the board. You guys have this question? That's the dues, these are the only two things that come out of the, uh, the one oh one.
And then can you walk, can you walk us through your staffs? First deputy?
Yes, Shannon. Then, uh, Debbie and Phyllis, Debbie Lang and Phyllis is my second deputy. These three are going to get the same day. And on the level three, uh, the level two, Shannon's the only one that has a level three and you guys agreed to, you know, we put in last year because it takes testing. And I do appreciate that because it does, or and I make a thousand dollars, I get a level like two, I get a thousand because of being an elected official. I am not running them with this going to be the last term. So you have to have a level three before you can even run it right down now, okay? And Debbie Lang has her level two, she's out of four watt two, but she gets five hundred because she's a, you know, uh, just a deputy. And then Phyllis has passed her level one in the process of getting her level two. Uh, she just passed it and crawl over and, you know, she's trying to get a level two also. So, uh, that's an asset for Tipping County really, if you ask me, but especially in today's world and all the changes and everything. But like I said, I've always been fortunate. I've had, um, the experience when I hired somebody, they've already got the experience, but we're either out of part-time or whatever. And even my part-time reassessment people. I did hire a couple of new girls this summer to help us out trying to fix this reassessment. And they did a lot of the files and, and putting the numerical order for me and things like that. But that's the start, you know? We need young people, I thought, you know, that's good experience to get them to know about the property record card is. Put them in some kind of order and I've even got them on the G I S and, you know, to kind of teach them that way. But add a team with one of them and then we have Katie, uh, Doltry, she's helping us out too. So, um, and bad, pardon, my old stand line, not old literally, but it's the stand line. And, uh, her and I are really been busy with the, trying to put, to see what we got in the reassessment, what we still need, need to create, so, but, uh...
Do we have a separate reassessment?
Yes, yeah. Now, they changed the...
Do we have it?
Oh, do we have it? Uh, but Lynette, you, but what you're actually asking is for a third, second deputy.
I have a... Now, I did write it down and I can't remember if I gave you...
Do you want the successor or reassessment?
I don't find it.
Uh, the number that the state, state budget's giving me fund one twenty-four, but the state board accounts has got eleven eighty-eight, so I don't know.
What?
On the reassessment this year, uh, I have number one, one twenty-four.
Fifty-one twenty-four.
Well, but Jamie brought me back to you and I was like, I was wondering when we said it's supposed to be eleven eighty-eight. But I talked to the... And they said it was one twenty-four, but the state board accounts is low eighty-eight, so...
Is it being changed?
But I think it's on the state board account side, because I talked to you and she said, but I don't know if they changed that. I think they hadn't heard about it, so I could go with the number here. But, um, I can give you guys, I can run the copies if you'd like me to. I submitted.
I thought I had them in your packets.
Do you mind it?
I don't mind. Just a second.
See you, pal.
Oh, he's gone like one minute. Suzanne and I talked before she left the clerk's office about the, the reassessment levy. And you know, it was, it was pretty healthy therefore, we cut it back, but, and Suzanne can kind of tell you what she was thinking about the years like that for him. But I assure you to the end of the year, we're, it's supposed to get like, uh... Eighty-two thousand and something dollars a year. Yeah, okay. But we talked about, I pay a lot out of the reassessment fund, because that's a fund that, you know, that's where all the money has to go. You know, like the tax check that was collected last spring and this last fall should have went in and the spring did not go, but I think we're getting that corrected, okay? Uh, in there. And then the twenty, the fund one twenty-three will stay open until the end of twenty thirteen. And then the money left there, they'll say, uh, well...
At a rate of time, they'll, they'll get a order for them to transfer that money between...
Whatever's left. I will tell you that I still have a, I had to make up a budget for the one twenty-three fund because of litigation with the reassessment, uh, fund. That is still in litigation. We still owe them a hundred and seven thousand dollars. I'm hoping to get most of that back, but I got to prove everything and that's what we're trying to do right now, so... But, uh, I wasn't sure if I had to make one up. They said, yeah, just make it for the amount. I think we, I think their grant total was a hundred and forty-five thousand, I think that's what I asked for.
Now, Lynette, do they do that so we can cover that?
Pardon?
Is that so we can cover that?
Yeah, well, she, she said make sure I have enough in there to cover like attorney or anything, like attorney fees or anything like that. So that's what I did. So, because I kind of asked them, because I wasn't positive on that, but they said it will stay open until twenty thirteen. And at the end of twenty thirteen, that money should go, be put over in the other one, so... It's, you know, confusing here. There ha, I, I don't think they're going to increase, we tried to stay the same, I think there has been in travel and, and, uh... I really, I really wrote it out for you guys, I don't think you guys got a copy of this. I've got, anything that I asked for, like, uh, or, uh, like Manitron and every, I got a quote from them. What to ask for, okay? And they, they sent it and I have a copy of that. I called everybody and tried to get an idea of what they think I should ask for. Ten percent or five percent or two percent or more than what it was last year, so... And like I said, we usually have documentation. I have it here, if anybody wants to see it, I'll be more than glad to make you all copies, it's no big deal to me. And I also kind of figured out, uh, kind of showed you how we come up with the dues and, and everything. Because we get quotes from our association telling us how much our dues are per person.
Greg has that, correct?
I, I give it, but I don't know, I'll be glad to...
No, you're gonna make it, you'll have it in October.
Yeah, I can, I'll be glad to print you guys all this, but I've got all kinds of information. I try to get close because I know you guys want time to prove that this is what the money's being used for, so...
So looking at one twenty-four, when you say part-time clerks, how many is that?
Uh, right now, uh, I've got three right now.
Just on a different...
Yeah, there are different scales too, like the two girls come in at seven twenty-five an hour, they have to make a ten seventy-five now, okay? So the more experience they have, I pay them, I, you know, I pay them for that.
What's employee benefits and what would you consider that?
The PICA?
On one, the next, the next one?
Oh, PICA, is that PICA?
Yes, it is.
Okay, nice. That's the new terms.
I, I might have should have put something else.
Well, the state's telling us what we have to use now, so...
Okay, that's a good question.
We need to speak last?
Uh, you don't have, oh, well, I, I gotta look there. Okay, it's something fair, but I will make you copies of this, how I come up with everything. Even the calculation on, like I said, we have some work for travel because, uh, it's downtown Indianapolis, we usually stay. That way it's money that, you know, that we can get that, because we have classes eight o'clock in the morning and, you know, how the basically traffic is and I'm not too busy about that, but... And also, uh, uh, we have association meetings after hours and, and everything, so, but, um, I did show you what we got there. And mileage, I showed you kind of an idea of how I come up with the mileage for it. But I think this will help you guys determine this on how I come up with my guidance. But I think it, you want to touch on what you think on the reassessment?
Oh, well, back in two thousand and ten, Phyllis and I were pretty close together and she presented to the council her budget for, uh, one twenty-three. And that is when the new reassessment period was being... And that is when the new reassessment period was being established. And the property taxes collected then in two thousand and eleven would be deposited into one twenty-four, one twenty-four. The new reassessment fund would begin to build. But she did come before the council and explain how she carries a tremendous amount of the funding within her reassessment fund and that it would complete itself. That she would continue on and continue on until it was completely completed and then she may have to go back to who likes the general fund monies in order to pay her expenses. And this was something that she did years ago. She took some burden off the general fund and utilized the reassessment fund to pay expense. Her current levy doesn't appear to be substantial enough to fund the budgets that she needs in her reassessment fund. So we talked a little bit about the levy and she's going to look into and talk to the state of Indiana about what it takes to revisit that levy and the rate and what we need to do if we want to consider a change. But I don't have any details at this time and um, I'm going to work with her. I'd, I'd like to take a look at the ledgers and see how much money is left in the one twenty-three and see how far it might be able to go.
Does the reassessment levy fall in the umbrella?
I think it's a frozen rate and back before I ever started working for the county, I believe that rate was frozen.
I mean, if we would raise that, do we lose something somewhere else? You know how would we look?
That, that I'm not sure of. That Linda's going to research.
I think she's going to talk to the DLG. I have a copy of this, so all the information that I've got from it. Uh, Karen Lard is, is one person that this come from. And she said, you guys might want to be thinking about it because of the cost of everything anymore. But like I said, I'll give you guys, I'm, I'm gonna make you copy of this. I'll just make sure you get a copy of everything here and you and I can work together on it and that way you can report to them what we found out in that way.
And now that I think about it, the reassessment levy is a part of our maximum levy. So it, it definitely is within the umbrella. The higher the levy for reassessment, the less granted to one of the other five funds.
But I do know reassessment has to be done and I know that if I don't have it in the, in the reassessment fund, then it's up to you guys, they, and you know, that's why I wanna, I try to help as much as I can, but I know that, you know.
Oh, it's a, it's a, it's a balancing act, because if, if we raise the levy on the reassessment and we lower the general fund, that's, that's no different than not spending as much reassessment money and spending some general fund money. At the end of the day, it's all the same. So, you know, we always shuffle, talk about levies and try to, where can we get our money? So it's probably something to look at, but either way, it's gonna be a wash potentially. It's not gonna be new money.
Yeah.
No new taxes. If I got questions for Linda, if somebody said that one time.
On the, on your budget, you have computer software, twelve thousand five hundred and that's in capital. Are you buying a new program or is it an update? Very last page.
What fund is it?
Uh, in, in one twenty-four, the reassessment, number four forty-three, computer software. The capital purchase. Twelve thousand five hundred.
Okay, the four forty-three is AS two for eight, two hundred, ESRI for twenty-eight hundred. And this is like a software for fifteen hundred.
So those are new programs or are they updates or?
They're, they're new, that's what I have.
Is that like, you're paying them for service?
It's like maintenance?
Like a maintenance, a yearly? Okay. We probably need to put that in three, don't we?
Yeah.
The fourth, we, we got it in our four hundred series, which means you're buying a capital piece.
Okay.
Like a computer or a chair or desk.
And I've got, I've got documentation on that, so, yeah.
But we'll, we'll move it over to three hundreds because that's where it is, like a service.
Okay. Yeah, it says maintenance.
Yeah.
So then what was the AI, what was the breakdown again?
Uh, it's uh, AS two, which is my personal property and ESRI, which is the GIS part of it and this is like a software, they're different ones that, you know.
The cost, how much?
Fifteen hundred.
No, the other two.
Oh, eighty, I'm sorry. Eighty-two hundred AS two, twenty-eight hundred on ESRI, fifteen hundred.
Okay, anything else?
Greg, I'll give you a copy of my current management fee and then I'll.
Cool. I just wanted to clarify one more thing, since, since that's in reassessment. Bill doesn't have it in his IT?
No, not, now Bill's got the web.
Right.
Okay, and I, I put mine back the way down. They sent it to me and then I, uh. Okay, I, first I think we're to support eleven thousand dollars from the GIS and the software maintenance. And then web hosting maintenance is ninety-two forty, that user can buy it. Yes. Okay, these are, any other questions?
All right, well, thank you.
Okay.
Very much. Okay, Steve. Right. Yeah, thank you, Bishop, yeah. And it's on page nineteen. Anything you want to just bring our attention to or highlight anything?
Well, the, just a couple of, the budget, you know, for, for our department's pretty simple script where we don't have much in terms of need, in terms of capital equipment or anything like that. One thing I always do like to point out, uh, and I think it's very significant is that, you know, this is a, this is a shared staffing arrangement, inter-local government agreement with some shared responsibilities. I think what you see for office supplies, for instance, that is only, you would really pay fifty percent of office supplies. We get reimbursed from the city on those things. And then most significantly, of course, is the, is the salary for the, for, for the planning director and for the assistant are reimbursed fifty percent from the city. So what you see is, is the whole figure, but you're not responsible ultimately for those numbers. And then with your permission, I'd like to, I'd like to pass something out and make a, try and make a case if I could for. And Jason Henderson is with me this evening. Jason's the president of the planning commission and as such, uh, he accompanies the director reporting the inter-local agreement for the budget here. And of course, this budget was something that was approved by the planning commission prior to submitting to the auditor's office. And then what I'm, what I'm passing out here is just a, a sheet with some information. Uh, I've only got two of these. I'll give you more of mine. And that was, uh, there is a, what I view as a discrepancy between what is paid in the building for the, for the administrative assistant in our office. I'd like to make the case that since we only have a two-person office, there's only two people there and then that the, the other person would be considered a, a first deputy. I mean, it would seem to make sense because there's, there's no other, there's no other position. She's not the first deputy, you know, what, you know, what is that position? But I'd like to say that, and, and point out, and this sheet attempts to do this. I know it's kind of a busy sheet with a lot of numbers on it, but I highlighted, highlighted some of it. The planning commission, I'm talking about the county planning commission, uh, suggested after some discussion that we put in for the two thousand and twelve approved rate for the, what you, you approved in two thousand and twelve for first deputy or for the administrative assistant for the year two thousand and thirteen. Right now, if, if you looked at the, the two thousand and twelve approved number for the administrative assistant versus what you had approved for the first deputy, there was a, a differential of two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's a big number, you know, percentage wise of the total. Again, I'd like to remind you that, I'd, I'd like to remind the, the council that you are responsible really for half of that, not the entire number. And uh, from, from my standpoint, in terms of running the office and trying to get the office, uh, you know, efficient, professional and so on, it's, I, I think it puts it as a very significant disadvantage in terms of, of attracting and retaining the best talent for that, for that position. And that's, in, in my mind, that's, that's a huge discrepancy, two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. I mean, no more than we pay our, uh, people in, in the courthouse in those positions. So that's, that's what I hope to accomplish, you know, and obviously, if you have any questions about the budget in general, I mean, we've really held the line on the budget. We're not asking for more money, I'm afraid we're going to be reducing that a couple of minor items. And uh, but in, in terms of the, being able to, to run that office in the best possible manner and grow it, it's really an important thing for us, I think, to get competitive with what you're paying other, other positions.
Steve, can you provide the data, basically the payments from the city for two thousand and eleven and twelve so far to be reimbursed then, so that we can see that it's coming in?
I don't, I'm not prepared to do that, but yes, we have.
Sure, yeah.
I believe Greg did prepare a, a first quarter.
There's a first quarter and a second quarter.
Yeah, so it, it's really working pretty well this year. Greg's been, you know, on top of it. I know he had difficulties, but this, this year we're, I believe, on top of it.
I think they got everything moved over from what I could tell, I've been tracking it and everything's been put to work to go.
Yeah, I think that's really working pretty smoothly. I mean, you really set it up and, and it's, it's a good model and I think it works pretty well in terms of how you track it and so on. Now the city's totally geared up to be looking for, you know, looking for those statements.
Maybe you've said this and I didn't hear you, sure did hear you say. How much have you taken in this year with the building permits of the, of the wind mills?
I, I attached a sheet here, I didn't draw your attention to it, but if, if you look at that thing that I handed out, the second page, the second page, uh, shows county revenue two thousand and twelve and city revenue two thousand and twelve. That, that should probably have been labeled to date, that, that's, that's revenue to date. And you can see, uh, that in the year two thousand and twelve for the county, we've taken in two thousand, two hundred and nine thousand dollars, two hundred and nine thousand four hundred and forty-eight. Now that's a, you know, that number's way out there. It's, you know, that, that number's not likely to be repeated unless, of course, that the county, you know, and, you know, approves another, another wind energy project. It's the, the third page, if you look at that, I mean, that, that shows you more normally what we take in. That's uh, that's showing county revenue for two thousand and nine, ten and eleven. And that shows that two thousand and nine revenue was way down than two thousand and eight because, you know, because of the real estate market fell off so rapidly. But our, our numbers of permits and, and the value that we're collecting is, is trending back up to what it was. And in, in two thousand and eleven, we collected fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty, but that was, that number also was somewhat inflated because that was the year that we, we took in twenty thousand dollars for an application for the, for, to the board of zoning appeals for a conditional, a special, a conditional use for the wind energy project. I mean, this year was huge in terms of the amount of money that we, we're taking in.
Steve, do you see any more projections with the wind energy money for the rest of this year? Should there be any more, should we see more of this come in this last quarter?
Not from our department, but you, you've got that, that ongoing, uh, you know, the economic development.
Right, yeah, I understand that, but I'm looking at this because we didn't budget this money in, at times. And that's why we were able to use it towards your, you know, complaint. So you don't, in the last quarter, you don't see any, there's no more permits or anything, inspections or anything that.
No.
Come out this, how about for two thousand and thirteen?
No, but we, you know, other than the economic development agreement.
We're done.
We're done.
Okay, definitely.
Yeah, we've issued every single permit. You know, we, we actually issued all our permits in, in two separate batches for a total of sixty-nine, sixty-nine separate towers. And then, of course, we had a, we had an additional, uh, permit issued for the operations and maintenance facility up by Windfall, but that was, you know, that's a building project which just happened to be for, for the wind energy project. I think we were fortunate to have that located in a county. It could have gone to Madison County.
Have I got any questions for Steve?
Thank you, Steve, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about it.
Steve, I got a letter, it's from the other guy saying, other ones still aren't going, they get there alone.
Does that work to you?
Well, I'm, I'm hearing that, I am hearing that, but uh, I, I don't know. They said that we were in, in the fourth quarter of two thousand and eleven, we were expecting an application and here we are, fourth quarter of two thousand and twelve. But, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to get, to have them do that application. And if you recall, with the, with the EON project, there were literally months of preparation work to get ready for actually appearing before the board of zoning appeals. We asked that they execute the road use agreement, that they execute the economic development agreement and, and put in place a, a decommissioning agreement. And none of those things are hap, happening there. There's a lot of work that needs to be done preparatory to actually accepting an application for a conditional use permit.
But they have to do it before they enter the year or that money.
I think that that, that tax credit, if that's what you're referring to, had to do with, they had to be constructed by that. There's no way in the world that they're gonna be constructed by that. They must be assuming that they're gonna get renewed.
I would guess, I would guess.
Yeah, I would guess. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, next one up is county reporter.
This'll be easy.
This is on, this is on page five.
Very simple. Any questions with anybody? Pretty much self expendable, close to last year.
Are you sure you can make it with less postage?
Pardon?
In two thousand and eleven, you spent five seventy and you're dropping it down to four hundred.
Well, I, I can take them perpetuation if I'm sure. We're still doing this shipping and the film and everything, but we're, we're trying to, we can.
Can you repair maintenance equipment, is there a lease in there?
Uh, there, right on the maintenance reader banner on that one. Uh, we own lease there, that's a maintenance agreement for the five percent increase each year. That's the two machines back there, the reason I put film with, I'll sort of use.
Anybody have any questions?
This is amazing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carolyn, still?
Whoa, sorry.
Wait.
Your security perpetuation?
Yes.
How is it? Are you planning to budget?
Well, there are a little in there in the budget, and there was a confusion on, I was told there were $6,000 in there, of course, there wasn't. I mean, I checked a few when I was dealing with that, and then, sort of turned out, so it's, at this point, record wise, it's 24, 27 in, on the whole. So, what I'm going to do is go back to where I paid two bills out of that and take from my perpetuation fund, which had that much money in it at that time. And I showed zero, but I kept being, oh, but I had money in there, so it worked. But anyway, so I talked to Al a couple days ago about it, so switch that. But there's still a little that goes in there now that to budget it, you know, it's just funny how many documents and everything, and it wouldn't be enough to pay any of the computer redactions on anywhere, actually.
Do you think you've got all the, you have all the work as posted on, Mary, but do you think about?
Well, I think Jackie had talked to me. She found, yeah, she, yeah, she had found Simon. She talked to me about it, and, you know, I don't know. I have not seen how it was. I've got to wait till everything is finished and done.
She may have had it some money.
Yeah, and then we had to go back, so there might be, but I did talk to Al to see if, because Jackie said at this point, I would get rid of it because I, and there wasn't any money. And I said, I tried really, I borrowed my dad. I showed zero, and everyone kept saying, speak that, that money? So, anyway, it's set up to the switch, but there are just 50 cents, I think, now on each document that goes in, so it's very little, and it would take, you know, like Jackie said, it'd take four years for me to repay the 27 back, 100 back, so that's how.
Did it go in the bed in 2012?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but see, the law changed last July. On the appropriation, how much money got divided up. It used to went all straight into the redaction. I had to pay on the maintenance on that for the computer, and that changed at the end of its time. So, then they did divide it up, so the my perpetuation got some, and still, security got some, and then they started that county collective training official, which at first started out just to be a recorder for any training that we had to have, and now it's like open season, unless they get the law changed on that, because there isn't enough for everybody to use. Just a slim amount of money that goes in there. It's only a 5 cent, so, yeah. So, I don't see where we may.
No, you can't, you can't budget.
Yeah, in any sense, it is a small amount, plus the fact that.
I didn't know what that fund looked like. I had viewed it for a couple of years, so.
Yeah, so, that's where we stand now, in the hole, dig it out. All right, thank you all.
Okay, Terry, you have a schedule? County extension. It's page 11. Page 11. Anything you want to bring our attention on?
Well, it's that Purdue did require to 1% increase in contractual services. Last year, they requested nothing. If, my understanding is that this all goes through, and it will be the first time in three years that educators have gotten a raise, depending on, you know, how the counties all respond to that. And then, the only other thing that's different is I did put the $3,000 in for Rachel, our part-time secretary that we hired, and that is to make the, for the $3,000 that we were supplying this year to give her net hours to make up the difference for the part-time.
Was it right?
Yeah, right, right. And I, just to give you a little bit of history on secretaries, because Beth and I had a long conversation one evening, and there was a lot she wasn't aware of, so I thought it might be helpful to share some of that with you. Before the education center and the extended service merged, the extended service had two full-time, two full-time secretaries. Barb Shinlove, who you also know, and Karen Powell. When Barb went to part-time, Jim left, just reduced that amount in the budget for the next year, which worked okay because we have Linda, who worked for the education center. So, when we merged, we had Linda, we had Barb, part-time, and we had Karen. Well, now Linda's duties have been reassigned, and so, all we had was Karen for a long time, and then we hired Rachel with the part of the money that we had in the part-time secretary line item, and we'd really like to try to get that back up because now we have, that would be just two secretaries servicing four people, four, two full, three full-time, I'm sorry, two full-time employees and two part-time employees. So, that's the reason for the request, and I felt like we needed someone. Karen does, primarily, you could call her the office manager and then the 48 secretary. 48 secretary keeps her pretty busy about six months out of the year, and so, for those six months without having our other part-time person, we were really kind of struggling. My plan for this secretary is not just to utilize her for answering phones and greeting people during those slow times. I want to use her for some other things. We've talked about regarding the project, is really needing someone to kind of spearhead that thing. We've had three ag educators in the last four years, and that person's supposed to be the one that's over it, and so, things have gone not as smoothly as we hoped. So, that was one area that, and she, by the way, has a B.S. degree in communications. So, the other area that we really lack in is promotion of our programs, and so, that's the other thing that we're adding to her responsibilities is to do some of the marketing and promotion of the extension education center program. So, it's not just a secretary per se, but there'll be other duties for her as well.
Any questions for Karen? Thank you very much.
You did get, did you, you all got our budget, our financial report? I thought, I brought that up a couple of weeks ago.
We'll have it. Rob camera.
Okay. Well, and if you have questions about it, please give me a call. One thing I do want to point out, too, because you will notice that we have quite a bit of money in the Fifty County Foundation Endowment. That money cannot be used for personnel. There are just certain parameters of what we can use that money for, so we can't wonder why we aren't using that money to do that. The other thing I wanted to mention was, you know, at some point in time, what we really would hope is that we would have a full-time ag educator and a full-time education. I, it's kind of all new, because this is all something of a, a full-time person like what Linda Higby's doing right now, which is non-traditional extension programming. But what we hope to do with those two positions is find the money with our own budget to use to do that. Right now, the county pays for that part-time ag position, but we thought what could be most helpful for us is if the county would put up the money for the secretary, and then we would try to figure out how to fund the other two positions with the money that we generate for programming and things like that.
Thank you very much.
All right, but only if you call, I keep getting at it, and you have questions. All right, you, thank you.
Probation's next.
Right? Yep.
Right on time. We're ready.
We're ready?
Yeah, we're, a couple minutes ahead of schedule.
Hardly ahead.
Wow! And this page, this is on page 26, I think.
That's one piece of it.
Yeah, one piece of it, right.
The others are.
So, the first part is page 26, this is probation we're looking at right here. Anything you have to draw our attention on this one?
Are you looking at, are you on?
General.
101?
101, yes, right.
Let's, let's talk about the Sauer last. Let's go through the other part first. The office supplies, everything, I kept the same as last year. Office supply, the 1,500, I believe the year before, it was 2,000. That was cut to 1,500, and I'm talking to Carolyn, it's going to be pretty close for us to make it this year with the 1,500. That's really the only one that, that seemed to be, could be a problem. After that, the post fees, the 600, I think we're going to be fine there. That was 1,100 the year before, and the repair and maintenance was, I believe, 2,000 the year before, and it was 1,000. I'll talk about that when we go to the next, to the other one. The Sauer schedule, they did raise the Sauer schedule for the first time. It was either three, at least three years, I think it's four, throughout the state. I brought copies of those. I kept both of our Saurers, I kept them at the minimum of the schedule. So, I did, I kept them at the very, at the minimum Sauer schedule for both of us.
How long have you been here?
24 years.
And Barb, Barb?
She is 16.
16.
Carolyn's Sauer, our secretary, $12,604, I asked for it to come out of the county general, $15,000 would come, we'd pay probation fees. We did the same thing last year, $15,000, the first Sauer was paid out of that, which is. Yeah, three different, 504. I asked for all of us, I just asked for all of us, a 3% raise, and I did all that. I asked for that out of, for Barb and I, out of our probation fees, so we could keep it at the minimum scale for the both of us. I did add the office supplies that I was referring to earlier, which was, that was $1,500. I had, I asked them for 500 more out of, out of this budget to help offset that, because that's the one that we're concerned about. Other than that, everything, I think, is the same. Furniture, equipment, office equipment, it very well could be different, though. I believe it was in the budget that we just broke the county general, and I, the difference there, that was, that was cut the year before. I asked for that difference out of this fund, because I'm almost positive, this coming year, we've got to get through something Carol's computer. I think I've said that two years in a row, but it's hard.
And you paid for that, Alan?
We would pay for that, yes, out of probation fees.
Which line are you looking at for that one? That equipment line?
I'm on 504, yes.
Yeah.
Frontier equipment, office equipment.
The 504 is in clip number two.
Yeah, is that, is that 441 or 442? We got 2AC2 lines there.
442.
Okay.
I, I know in the past, she's, she's taken some out of 441, if something was, if all of 442 was used in the past. Those lines haven't been there before. I just, I don't think we had anything in them last year. I put it back over in there.
We see some for 12.
What was it?
And then we see no increase past 413. That's why I was asking. I show 1,000 furniture equipment and 2,000 in the equipment.
For 12?
For this year and next.
Okay.
Both the same.
So, they're the same, same, yeah.
So, if you thought you were going to increase, you didn't ask for it? No, is that going to be all right? No?
We'll be okay. We'll be okay. Yeah, we'll be okay.
Does Bill handle your, your computer stuff, or you guys do it yourself?
He does quite a bit, I guess. We used to, in the past, we had to have, have a guy that would come up, because she's, she's using two computers at the same time, because she's still using an old system. And at the end of the year, we'd have to pay a guy to come up, who would roll it over at tape, like the whole weekend, just to roll everything out that we'd have to do for the state for accounts. But those dates are over, so you don't have to do that anymore.
Looking at both the juvenile and adult probation, you've got a total of $7,000 in conference and travel. Is that for the two of you?
For the two of us.
Where all do you go?
Well, we've gone with, the judge's asked us to go last year, or two years ago, we went to Las Vegas to a conference with him. We have to go to three conferences a year to stay certified, certified with, we do so many hours, and it takes three conferences.
Do you need anybody to carry your bags?
If you want. Carry your bags.
You got somebody to help.
No, there's spring and fall in Indianapolis, we go to visit, but one of them's a three-day conference.
So, we've got those three, the county probation, 101, juvenile probation, adult probation. Those are the three, right?
Those are the three, yes. We took in, thanks, anyway, our administrative fees today. I got, found out that we've taken in right at $5,300 per year, which, which more than offsets our raises. And, and that's what that's to be used for, to be put into the county general fund for probation officer raises. We took in over the last year too, in probation fees, which is funding five oh four. We took in a little over thirty-six thousand dollars, which covers, which still covers the year for that.
Over the last year?
Yes. So we, there, there's still, there's still more in there, but, but we're not in the red, we're not taking away from it every year. Like we were at one time when we were paying all of someone's salary.
Right now, Rick, right now, as of the balance, it's like he ran it for the eleven. There's only like about a thousand dollars difference from the beginning of your year to date, so you're really spending, really close, I mean, that's good. You're not losing on the cash side.
You're spending what you're taking.
Spending about what we're taking in.
Your balance and that fund are really good.
Well, and, and we are conscious of that, we try to do that.
You're getting off of it.
Any other questions for Rick about these three? Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
So we're on, so we're on break. Six forty-five. Mommy, you go out and get us something?
Well, that was to be used to reduce the, the umbrella that was referred to, the, the total.
Well, part of, is a part of that that is used for the, uh...
Yeah, some of it was spent for the, uh,
Compensating plan. Well, that part of the fees from the, uh, from...
The excess revenue from the planning department.
Now, that came out.
That came out, yeah, we know.
It came out in the three hundred, yeah.
Three hundred, we know. The, the only way the levy gets affected, you got a levy for the general fund, CCD, Cube Bridge, Health, reassessment, all these levies.
Yeah.
Certain, some of those are in what we call the umbrella.
Yeah.
So if you raise one, you gotta lower another. Because you can't get out. So, on the reassessment, if we would raise it, so she brings in more money, we gotta lower somebody else.
Right.
Well, last year or the year before, we lowered Cube Bridge, because we had some cash, and we were doing so many projects, we lowered Cube Bridge, and raised general fund.
Right.
To make our balance, make it work.
Well, when you, when you get excess revenue, like, you know, he's talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. Does that lower the levy total?
We, when we, when we, when we get our budget, when we work through it, we're gonna say, we have right now X amount of cash.
Yeah.
We have so much that we're gonna spend
Yeah.
For the rest of our budget.
Yeah.
That's been already appropriated. You wanna start the year with X amount of money, next year we're gonna bring in so much money, and next year we're gonna spend so much money. That gives us our levy. So if we have extra cash, then that pushes that levy down. So in theory, you can get hurt on your, but you're, but you're saying taxes.
Right.
Because you brought that in, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So it's the same. That, his fees go into the general.
One of the variables is what the council determines is the, that comes over, allow the cash balance to carry over. That's kind of a fluctuation.
It seems like, you know, you'd be able to take that extra revenue, put it in the rainy day fund, hang on to it. Yeah, and not be penalized.
Yeah.
But you are. But you know what happens, I mean, in one, in one instance, you're saying as, as a taxpayer, if we've got the money, why are you making me pay taxes?
Yeah.
You know? So how much do you wanna hold on to, so that cash balance? Every year we say, okay, we want a million, two. And then by the time we're done, well, okay, we have eight. So we shave, we shave four there, you know, I mean, those are, those are big numbers when you start, we start working on budget.
Right.
But yeah, and that's exactly why, when we had our discussion in our last council meeting, we talked about paying some different things, I said, I would, I would rather not use the rainy day fund, because I think it's hard to put money back into savings, once you've spent it, and it goes into that formula, that once the money's gone, you have all good intentions, but to actually make it happen, I think is hard. So...
Well, interesting, and the other thing that I have part-time getting my hand on is the, uh, where's the, how is the money established? How is the, the total? The state does that, didn't they give you the number?
Yeah.
And that's basically it.
Hello?
I don't know. It's going to make the challenge decide. I know which.
Yeah, hello?
And I don't know. I mean, I just depend on the challenge. Even like. We work that right here. Watch the first. I don't think trade side. She's like, the only thing she was talking about to be helping was to settle. But, you know, he can get help. If that can be built in, he can get help. You know? We did other auditors. Other auditors would be. Most of the. I was looking at something. They're going. I want to show. I want to make. Look at. Yeah. She was. I was. That's. Change. It's got. I have got to set up permanent. And I'm going to only because I just. I'm going to leave. And we go. If you. If you. If you go another few hours. I mean, I would go in. I would pay it back. I think there's. Because there's stuff that. Are you? I'm okay. I'm tired. Tired. I'm getting sleep. What? I'm not getting good sleep. You're not getting good sleep? Well, I didn't either last night. Because I was doing go to bed about ten thirty. My grandson come in and said, oh, my gas tank goes leaking. So we had to call the. Gas.
In your, in your new car?
Yeah.
Is that the new car?
It's the gas for the house.
Oh, okay.
Natural for the raw gas. Timber.
Yeah, I had a. I don't know where I stayed out there with them. I didn't, but they had to. Made two trips out there to fix it. But I hadn't been out there for the dog. About nine. And I didn't smell. But ever again.
Glad it got caught.
Yes.
Well, yes.
It could have been dangerous.
Yeah.
We've never had that happen.
That was our first time for everything.
Yeah. Tell my daughter. Go. I should have went for that.
I don't know.
You. I was watching the time.
That's what drive my crazy. Especially case. Really, very seriously. Would you shoot a wire? Bye.
I don't know whether they win or not. They announced that I'm sure. Becky, what? Cast tank. The leaky was. The gas tank. The gas. The hose of the house. Where propane runs. It started leaking. Eric. Went to the van.
Who's that?
My. Our money. I guess they went to the van. Check on the horse. I knew what I had. Anyways. Leaking. So we all remember that. Come out there. We're there. I never. But Eric was so good. I don't think I'll. I can just get him to where he go to work. He stayed around there. So. Part of those are brackets. He's about to be in. He's going to two P L. No, still got some. But I still talk about. Most of his. I mean, he's got some. She's just about getting ready. Zero.
She wanted to work here. She's doing. She wants to store. You know?
She's. No, I think he must have went to the van. The trash off.
I was sorry. I don't want to say your brand.
I have. That one they have.
Well, I know. Didn't. If you say she's.
You know, she's. I couldn't either. And she passed her. Test the first time she took it. I couldn't believe that. You know, that's. She never worked.
She was my student.
I know. She never worked hard.
She must have changed somewhere along the way.
What is supposed to advertise? Yeah.
Yeah. For the guys who want.
It's advertised.
She's a smart girl.
What size?
Certainly. Do you advertise what they present you? We compile everything. It's put into a computer.
How do you have that?
And then it generates. Generates this notice. Okay.
All or not.
And then we. And then.
And we keep our. We're about our eleven years.
She just changed.
That's what we.
She has made it.
I'm rating more than. So. And I'm. On the ten. Eleven. We sit there.
You may come in here. Last, what last time. It makes sense. I think. You couldn't. Could have spent more than you bargained. Right? Yeah. Makes sense.
And while we advertise. That's why that's why. Because if you don't put it in. One. Not only that, but two. You can't increase much of that. So that's. If it's advertised. It's five million.
She looks for.
And it. We want to rate it five million. If she's one, we can't do that.
And is she married?
So when you start making those cuts or changes or whatever.
She lives.
You go to the person that's involved in that area. Say, no, others on this thing. Cutting her budget extra dollars. You have to.
I bet she lives.
Make four. Different fine items or.
It's.
You go every, through every line.
For the big things. Like what's on the. Which is. County. I mean, like. Must be making a lot of. I mean, I already.
They have a house. What did she do?
You know? Do you look that sort of deeper? Not that. They can know to investigate it more. Or.
It was.
Some things. There's some things. They. They come back. He didn't have one year. I would say, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. Some things are great. I don't look at today.
I believe that is. The greatest.
I know they won't. They don't ask. Yeah. Right. But I didn't know what. You have to say, okay, I'll do. We've got to cut your entire budget by four percent. You have to figure out what's. My son.
We go line to line. And what if some say, well, if we don't call again. And if we have to make some big cuts in the area. We will call again and say.
I don't want to do. She hikes.
Where she would help us. I mean, we try to include them as much as possible. Because they've got to work. Whatever we put them.
Once.
But if you went around and said, okay, or buy you guys. Three percent of your budget or four percent. We've not ever gone to that extreme. Because some people are down to very cheap. To find another three or four percent. It would be really hard. And you don't let put a department to the point where they can't. And just like.
Eric.
We're all. Are we on?
Here. He brought away.
You're on. You're on. Do you know what he says? Just left it on.
Yeah.
You guys whispering, I can't hear anything anyway, so. But like.
But I don't remember.
I don't think I've. No, I don't. I'm wondering. If Karen Thomas had her in.
Which.
I don't know.
That we tried. How the apartment has involved.
That's how she told.
Last year, we got to the point where we were looking at areas.
I don't know.
Maybe they shift. And some of the funds, little funds that they have that they get off of like D E's and stuff like that.
She was having trouble.
Was able to utilize some of that. And they've always been one.
And it would drop, stand.
Well, at that break of note, right? If you don't want to ask. Yeah, sure. That's. That's. Doesn't come in play. Budget.
Well, that's.
Like a commissary.
So that's. That's actually.
It actually gives him that authority to spend that. But if we don't. We don't prove some things that he probably wants. Then he knows he's got to use that. You know? Just like him wanting to. You know, because. Part time. More hours.
She's there behind.
He knows he has to have the resource to. Now, we'll be fun.
Whenever you see her, doctor. You tell her, I said.
Well, I will.
And I find her life amazing.
She won the. Jim. But kept that garden money, you know, he has every year.
Jim.
So she want to leave that because she knows always fall.
And it's open to the public. To sit in on that.
She wasn't.
It's an education. And so.
You write that. You're here.
But I. I really had the. Fourth.
You know. Something. Five hundred.
And usually most of the. We eat. Well, I think. We know. It was. And I. Um. Just like.
Well, I wouldn't have. And I.
And she. So she.
Like an average. But it's. But I. She don't want that.
Oh, yeah. She loves.
They're out. But. But number forty. So that.
Goes up, you know, work on the weather. It's like. Like she was a key. Stayed. She. There.
So they show them. From that.
Probably gave them.
He's making. A shelf here and there. And I have thirty-one. Can meet you. I've been trying to. Find those.
Okay. Where's your sign?
The. Right. This is the darkest spot to stay.
That's what I heard. You know, the biggest. Also good. I talked to him. It's a secret. You want to. Expect you. I thought that was pretty good.
Yeah.
It's commercial part be eighty-one percent.
It will be real good. Everybody's happy. I remember. So. Because I get ladies. We're having severely dry weather. Joe Schmesser still today. We got to do some planning. So Jake. What do you define? Isn't that close? It's going to be short. Well, the price actually went up enough to offset that. Probably. Money that year. They had. Street boy didn't have. Hasn't been good. So.
Normally, Hickton County does very well in dry years.
It's better in dry years than wet.
We were blessed with some very good soils. Yes. You're right.
Jake. Suppose Jake. That is a nice. I think.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... ...[276.06]
Trying hard every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, Surveyor. Jason.
Sam.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Of course, request for increasing salaries for myself and the, for second deputy. We have utilized the part time on you guys granted is a hundred dollars, so we have utilized that. Office supplies, stationery, I mean, that's all stayed the same under the garage and motor, which is gas. We had requested thirty-six hundred dollars last year, you've given three thousand. That will run out probably at the end of September. I think we've got five hundred dollars left in there. Gas, you know, jumps, obviously, the gym's around. So, we will have to probably move some money out of repairs and maintenance. So, that'll come in front of this board, since it's not the same number, we'll just need action. We've got some money left over in it. As I was looking through here, as Jay was speaking, there's probably a couple of line items we could eliminate. Along the lines of the photo and blueprints, we could eliminate that. Repair and maintenance, we can eliminate that. That's under other services and charges, we could remove those. I do know that same, requesting same as on postage. We, again, are asking for thirty-six hundred dollars towards the gasoline. And, of course, then with numerous members on this board, and you'll notice in there, is a request for a new vehicle. We have explored other options. We talked with Sheriff Moses after Danny Pearson passed away to see if we could utilize the black suburban over there, where that was. For whatever reason, the answer was no. We do, the Surveyor's office had the oldest vehicle in service, ninety-eight. There's some nickel rust. I, I know, my goal was to make sure everybody could take a ride in if they wanted to. I know, I was able to catch Councilwoman Nichols, I know Suzanne, she already done this, she was auditor. So, it's just, you know, we, we've spent so far, this year, on that vehicle, we've spent... Well, we've got roughly seven hundred dollars left down the money that was appropriated. We've had many repairs to it. It's just, it's just an older vehicle, I mean, I don't know what else I can say about it. So, that was, that's really the significant cost that we have in addition to our budget. But like I said, there's one item that I was looking through here, we could, we could eliminate this from the budget.
Which ones were those again, Jason?
That was...
Is that blue prints?
It was blue prints, yes, and it was... You could actually eliminate... The other services and charges, repair and maintenance.
With the equipment, three sixty-two.
Uh, yes, three sixty-two zero zero, yeah, and three-three-three zero zero, we could eliminate that. We could also eliminate two-one-three zero zero, which is stationary and cranky.
And then if I cover the truck?
Yeah, I know, that's only like... That's only like two hundred dollars, but...
So, Jason, just repair this year, what, what do you have to do to...
Uh...
And then try?
Let's see if... Just want to talk to your deputy now. There's been, there was, rear seal was going out, most recent repair was seven-twenty-seven twenty-twelve, and that was actually to tip the Ford in the amount of eight-hundred-and-eleven dollars. Rear seal was going out, rocker bars in the front, every time, anybody here can drive it if they'd like, there's popping sounds in the front. I know we've had the transmission replaced before, it's a hundred-and-seventy thousand miles on it. There was a repair done from wrenches for ninety-two dollars, which I believe was brakes. Another repair done by wrenches on January for two-hundred-and-two dollars. I can get a detailed list of what's been done to it and make sure that's ready, I can give it to Greg. I mean, no budget hearing, we can pull, obviously, receipts from the last four years. I'll make sure Greg, Greg has that, sir.
So, fifteen thousand, what's your plan? Because that's not going to buy a truck.
It's, um, it's like, no, it would definitely have to be a three-year commitment. And it, it would be, it could be, it could be less than that by the time you advertise or negotiate with whatever these guys over here, and it would be along the same line as the dollar buyout at the end. Or if, if you guys are going to grant Moses more new vehicles this year, perhaps, condition is they give us the two thousand and four black one, I know it's been serviced, you know, it wasn't driven for a year, so, you know, we're willing to take it, we can get anything we can move up. Age-wise, we're not, we're not objective to buying something huge. Maybe it's two-year commitment. We don't really have any problem with any of that, so... It's just something, an idea you have in your minds when you're negotiating with Sheriff or J.O. Or, we're always, we had a fund like White's did, where it's by vehicle, but the appropriation department.
So, the fifteen, I'd rather ask the plans...
It would be fifteen.
For three years?
Yes, sir, each year for three years.
But you're looking at, you need a four-wheel drive vehicle, and you need something that's going to carry some of your equipment.
Right.
So...
Because we utilize the vehicle as part of, as actually a surveying instrument. What the appropriationist board gave us, GPS equipment amounts to the top of it, so it, it in itself becomes the rod that you would see somebody holding out there. We could drive the fields, even the farmers in here that have like Accystear or anything that they see Co-op do, that's exactly what we utilize the truck for, it helps us instead of somebody having to walk the field. Drive it when the crops are down, so...
Any questions for the place? Do you have another one?
Yeah, I've got two more.
See if we can find those. One is the second, second clip.
Perpetuation.
Perpetuation, yeah.
Uh, two thousand dollars last year, but we'd asked, and of course, you guys, at our request, pretty much wiped out the account to purchase some new equipment. And so, we're, we were asking for a thousand dollars, you guys have granted two thousand dollars for this year. And of, of that two thousand dollars, we've got six hundred dollars left. So, we utilize it to purchase stakes, flags, if anybody lives up west and you drive alongside apparently five hundred west, just north of Twenty-Eight, you notice there's some flags up there, there's some stuff we've set. They're putting in a new surface drain, no, actually, yeah, surface drain all the way from Gitrag through Burman's property, so we utilize stakes like that to mark that. Any of the magnetic locators, we utilize that fund to purchase it. And I think, not this coming year, but I know we had discussion with Councilwoman Roche about perhaps utilizing that money to pay for registration fees or licensure, thing along those lines, but that's, that's not until 2014, so we wouldn't be requesting that next year. But that's, that's what we use the perpetuation for.
And that...
And, and that, that fee is captured through the transfers, not, it's not on the general fund.
And then the third one is page sixteen, so Drainage Board.
Very, it's very similar budgeted, too. Legal notices, this, this was approved by the Drainage Board at one of their regular hearings. Legal notice, five hundred dollars, it's like the, the board here granted us three fifty. We're down to about two oh five, so if that single number was granted, that probably wouldn't be a problem. Postage, it, it's completely gone. We do a lot of mailings when we have those notices, those hearings, we send those out. Everybody has to receive a stamped letter. And then other correspondence, doesn't pertain to this necessarily, but just like on Big Cicero, we had sent out notification, which would have came out of Big Cicero, fine, they, they got postage. But we're, myself and Dean are walking the creek from here to, to its outlet in the horse, reservoir. So, we had to send everybody down through there, a notice. We were able to get through the, we were able to walk from McDonald's to the Atlanta Gun Club Tuesday, so next week, we're going to walk from Atlanta Gun Club to Arcania, then the following week, Arcania to down to Cicero. Because we're taking a lot of photos, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting off subject, but we're taking a lot of photos because if any of you guys have ever heard complaints about Big Cicero, they say our site's good, and all the sentiments down there, this, this, and this. And the representatives from Hamilton County, they are adamant about not dipping or clearing down there. So, we're going to show the other three members on this board, perhaps visual evidence to say, yeah, there's the problem right there, let's sort of put some Big Cicero money to it, getting the outlet. But that's what we utilize the postage for in, in Drainage Board, not for Big Cicero, but for anything else we're going to go out and do that pertain to the Drainage Board. And then office supplies, four hundred dollars is what was granted. And when they had pressed the five hundred dollars last year, I would, I would imagine the four hundred would work out again this year. We had to purchase some, some new forms, every time there's a ditch complaint, or, and this year, we fill out a ticket and give it to a contractor. We had to purchase a name plate. And then the only other thing that was discussed, and I don't know if we mentioned it last time, was a line item for travel conference. There's a Farm Bureau, there, there's a couple of things that, drainage-wise, that the members might get some benefit out of. And currently now, last year, I went to the Farm Bureau Drainage School, and Mr. Tebby went, but, you know, he was able to get right with me. You know, if I wouldn't win, Mr. Tebby would have driven down there, and he would have had no way to bill any mileage, or I can't remember if it's a cost associated with that. I think if you're in government, it's free, but he would have had a way to recoup any of those monies, he would just have to, unless you can put it through the S.B.C.D. So, that, that's pretty much it on the Drainage Board.
Did the Drainage Board talk about or consider any budget to pay to members that aren't being paid currently?
No, they did not. And I do remember in researching, I don't know if it was Suzanne, or former auditor, whoever, or maybe it was, maybe it was Commissioner Harper that came up with it, that showed that there was action that combined those two salaries, that indeed the commissioner did at one time receive two separate pay checks. And then it was combined, or other services, but no, the, the three layperson on there, they have not, they, they do not get compensated. I can't remember what it was, we used to get Scott on the pain commission, it was twenty-five or fifty dollars, thirty-five dollars a meeting or something, but no, they didn't discuss that, as best I can recall. And the requirement of the board now is there just only has to be one commissioner on there, so the next commissioners, they may, Ed Sloan is, takes the hair in the seat currently, so you just have the two commissioners, Harper and Kleinschel on there. It's not to say that next year, there may just be one commissioner on there, and maybe just four citizens.
Their responsibilities are all the same, doesn't matter...
Oh, yeah. Month of Drainage Board.
Board to board.
It's the same, yeah, absolutely.
All right, any other questions for Jason? The fourth Surveyor. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Might you hear from Moses? Take the Moses's place?
I saw vodka up there.
He starts at seven fifteen.
Yeah, he's going like this.
Coroner, I want to page some.
This is the hot seat?
Anything you want to bring to our attention? We're looking at the... See one thousand nine hundred percent for any of this stuff?
Not yet. One thousand nine hundred percent? I could work within that. Okay, I think our, you know, our biggest expense every year, our biggest item is the outside professional services for autopsy, toxicology, transportation. We have no control over that, it depends what kind of year we have. I think we've stayed within that last couple of years, or two years going into official appropriation because of a busier year.
Any reason for the decrease for deputies?
We, to be a deputy coroner, you have to, and we've got a young man who helps us out with removals and different things the coroner's office, he's not trained yet. We thought we should, I thought we should have paid him some for helping out. But then he or somebody else down the road, if we added a deputy coroner, it'd be nice to go back in there, but I'd say it'll happen next year.
All right, any questions for Ball? For Ball? Greg, listen.
Oh, yeah. I'm getting kind of late here.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it? Thank you.
That's it?
You see the sheriff walking around out there?
Uh, he's eating supper.
You're up there. Age twenty-nine, says jail. The sheriff's something separate.
It's like eight-six or nine.
Wow, we're getting double team, Doc C.
No, this is just my person, so I'm like, she can answer some of these better.
I agree.
All right. Page twenty-nine is the, is jail.
Which one does it start with?
I couldn't find it, she grabbed it.
The sheriff's on eight-six.
Oh, eight-six, oh, yeah, all right. The sheriff's on... Sheriff for six. Eight-six.
So, there's a number that's going to change in there that's not exactly right.
I have too many employees.
So, which, which number is that?
It is the five twenty, five hundred, it's three-four ninety-two, five hundred. That's a group, the ranks is... I'm not following it yet.
You're looking at different numbers than we are. Maybe go, go line by line?
Yeah, just, anything you want to point out with the...
Okay, then the, I guess in the personal services, eleven hundreds, one hundreds?
Yeah.
You got the sheriff, then you got the major pay, deputy pay. It has five, thirty-seven-five is what they make you for, what are you talking about?
We have four hundred and forty-four thousand, that's all we see on that. We, we have one line, four hundred and forty-four thousand for deputies. We don't have the breakdown, yet.
Well, that's...
That's all right.
Yeah, that's like the number that's, should be right.
Last year was three sixty-four, there's sixty-four thousand.
You know what, we, we're going to meet on October the tenth and eleventh, right? And I really think we need your spreadsheet that shows...
You want to see your, your group, your groupings?
Well, I know, that's what you turn in, but when it gets computerized, when we get a summary, so we don't see all those little breakouts, we want to know, why do you want to pay all your deputies? And we see it as four hundred and forty-four thousand. But when we do our budget on those couple of days, I would like to have your spreadsheet where you've grouped it.
Right.
Because maybe we won't do that, maybe we will, but that, that gives us the detail.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, I guess on the salaries, I think I tried to give her about fifteen hundred. I was working to try to bring those salaries up comparable to setting.
Each group is...
Yes, and there should be, this time around, there should be five at thirty-seven-five, two at thirty-six, and it'd be four at thirty-three. Then I also got the one add-in that we have to give a job back to in July. Guy went into service under Frank. By law, you have to provide him a job. You got to hold him for five years. So, his salary would be like sixteen-five for half a year.
You're putting him in that thirty-three category?
Right, I put him in that category, right.
As a number, as a fifth person in that category?
And then... Office supplies, I think you've got twenty-two hundred. See that?
Right.
Operating garage motor, a hundred, that's good, you guys' link's going up. Something we're running short right now, we'll get it right later. Other supplies, uniforms, we have eighty-five hundred, photo, a hundred, and other, three hundred, ninety-eight hundred. Merritt Board, I think, we gave a thousand last year, or was it fifteen hundred? I tried to give fifteen hundred and we went back to a thousand, except what we did. Put in fifteen hundred to give them full sum for serving. Tractual services, postage, conference, and cell phones, thirteen-five, I think that's half the cell phone bill, is what you're...
Everything we asked for is effective, and we asked for much?
Yeah, pretty much, except for the...
Except for where we're seeing we're going low. Come on now.
You, you asked for two hundred more in cellphone?
Two hundred dollars more?
That's only half a year ago.
Yeah, it's half a year. Per maintenance equipment, I think we go three thousand.
We have three thousand on train.
Yeah, we went four...
We were kind of wanting to get it back when it was saved away, so we stopped using our firearms, because in looking back at my books, which I knew this was going to happen, firearms applications are dropping drastically because of lifetime, so that fund will not stay at that amount. I mean, where, where before, I would bring in nine hundred, a thousand dollars a month. Now, I'm lucky, bring in four hundred, three fifty, and that's because of the lifetime. So, I, just makes me nervous in years to come, using that economy.
We told us that last year.
Yep.
Something else, something else that I'd like, when we meet in October, is the commissary. We haven't seen it as a board this year yet. So, you know, and I know you have several different funds, you know, that you can draw different things from, but once again, as we start crunching the general fund, there might be, we took the Yurtaho under Sheriff Fritsch.
Yeah.
We use some other different money to make sure we can pay for that, so some of those things might have to happen again.
Right. Right now, we do have one computer in, we're going to put the cars for the, instead of having, having computers inside, we're going to put the computers in the cars, which we're trying to get to. They'll be able to work all our stuff off there, and that's what I was going to pay, about twenty thousand dollars on the commissary on that. Put the computers in, got his cars. We'll bring you a total.
I'd like to see the activity. Totals are good, but I want to see what's happened for the year.
Yeah, talk to her about that.
What we, what we brought in and what we paid out.
I think we're actually supposed to do a report on that.
Well, you have to ask the officers, because they can...
They do, yeah.
Maybe you guys ask them for American auditor, I have that all the time, so... Half a year they have.
And...
Um, I did, I think, on the sheriff's side also... I think I put in for, trying to get my sergeants, seven hundred and fifty dollars for rank pay, since they have more responsibilities than the regular deputies.
Oh, are they?
I got a rank one, please.
Seven fifty.
And there's only two sergeants, seven fifty's. Try to get them some more.
Want to talk just about vehicles?
Yeah, well, that's in the jail budget, I think.
No, it's not. Right, right at the bottom. Right, very long, last thing. You, you have to use the one from thirty-five-five this year to a request of sixty-five.
Right.
So...
I think there was a year that the sheriff didn't get any vehicles, which threw us out of rotation of like two vehicles a year or something like that, to keep them under, I think I've got five or six vehicles right now, over a hundred thousand miles, and I'm going to have to get two, three more this year. Kind of get back in the rotation.
You, you want to buy three new vehicles in thirteen?
Yes. That must, that would help us get back towards the rotation that we are, that we used to be on.
I don't think we've ever fell off the rotation, because Frank, the first year he came, he didn't ask for anything, and we're like, no, 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 we're getting cars, because we didn't want to go, you know, a year without getting any, and then be slammed, it just...
I think he did.
We did?
I, I think, I think he did the first year, I think it was his second year, there was one year we ended in the system, we put it in, we actually put it in.
You put one car in, and it didn't last very long, I think.
We also had a car that got wrecked, so that was a new one, and so it, it was a little bit out of the sequence, but if, and we'll, we'll have to look at what we owe on whatever vehicles we owe on, and then we need to see what it would take to buy one, two, or three vehicles on top of that.
Right, I think that's what I figured, I think I figured in the payments, the leases that we have now for next year, add it, I think, thirty thousand dollars, too.
I, I would mind for the, the third thing for us for October, besides the salary groupings and commissary, which we might have, would be a vehicle summary of what, what these, how many miles we got on what, the years.
Okay.
You know, an O-two Caprice or a twenty-ten Chevy or whatever.
Right.
And then what we're paying on, I think Greg would probably have, we're paying on the last couple, we've paid once, or we've paid twice, this would be the last payment.
Cory's Tahoe, we're paying on Ellen's Caprice we bought, and I think we've got one payment on the Impala, two Impalas, I think that's it.
One payment left on two vehicles.
On the two new Impalas.
So, can we just get a schedule for us?
I would, I'd, I'd put them together, I mean, years they are, I mean, my... I would, I'd put them together, I'm like, years and hours, I mean, miles on each one of them, including the reserve cars.
Suzanne had a great spreadsheet on the, on the payment, we used of it, but. I'll tell you what. Last year, and I know this is a commissioner issue, but I'm gonna say it again, since you're still here. When we budgeted two new vehicles for this year, and when you got the pricing and everything, we assumed we're trading in two vehicles. Now, those two vehicles went to EMA.
Right.
But we didn't trade in, so we, we assumed financially that was gonna happen. So, you know, it makes it hard for us to work a budget and assume we're gonna, what these things are, and then stuff gets changed on us, so.
Instead, we traded in a mobile command, the old mobile command.
I know, but that's not two sheriff's cars, so.
Yeah, probably worth more than. We ever wanted to get out of them, but.
So when, when we look at new vehicles, I mean, something I, I can think about is, what's our total fleet? I mean, we don't need to have a lot of brown vehicles sitting over there we're not driving.
Right.
If EMA wants some vehicles, that's a different story, but when we budget, I just, myself, thought we were trading in two cars. And I thought that's the figures we had. So when you go out and do your bid, and somebody's bidding, you are taking it with a trade-in. So if you don't trade it in, the bid price is higher. So we're spending more money than we would assume that we need to, and we're, we got a surveyor that wants a vehicle, we got other people wanting other things, and we're trying to juggle the funds, so.
Right.
If we're gonna buy three cars, I know you got a new deputy coming, but, you know, let's make sure that we're, we're trying to stay where we need to be.
Right, and that's, we will trade in three vehicles for, I mean, there's no question we have to. And if they were to give some old man, EMA wouldn't have got the cars. I mean, cause I had to have something to offset the price of the cars that we bought last year, so that's the only reason we didn't trade two, we just traded one whole command head.
Find anything for John, then. Share his budget before we. You did mention, John, with the, with the police retirement and longevity, that's.
Right, that's.
That's not out of our control, but it did.
Out of your control.
Yeah, and cause most, and that is a fund that do the clerks, I remember on paper we serve, thirteen dollars and fifty cents should go to into that fund, uh-huh, on every paper we serve.
There is twelve thousand, it looks like, in the sheriff's pension trust fund, like, whatever, twelve thousand dollars, can that be transferred over?
That's what you pay, that's what you pay, that can come out there to pay into the.
Does it, does it transfer to the general fund to offset some of?
It does on your pension, yeah, when you guys pay the pension money, that's to help pay, that's, that's there.
To reduce the channel, that's why you even got that fund. I don't know, I don't know what's required to, to be able to spend that money, because, you know, is it going to be to be appropriated?
I, there's something that's always not, you know, everybody's.
That doesn't arrive.
Yeah, but anyway.
You know, I know we've left that five dollar benefit that every time someone logs out of jail, which is also supposed to build toward pension, do we know if that's being planned?
All of it.
Because I take that money and give it as a report of collections to the auditor's office, so.
Actually, the court pension also.
Is that the special debt, is it?
Yeah.
Four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
What?
Four hundred, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, there should be a lot, I mean, unless it's been, unless that's been. I don't know why it shows an expenditure of six hundred and forty-five.
There should, I mean, unless that's being transferred to a pension fund, but that.
Yeah.
Is any other good page in the state, or is it all?
We haven't asked for colors.
Now, we should have a training fund, we collect money on tickets. I think we get three dollars a ticket for a training fund. Now, if we, if we can, balance that. I have no idea.
Those are funds that continue every year, I mean, they're not anything that you guys put money into for us, it's safe, for everyone.
Do you spend them though, sometimes?
Do, it's on training. I know, I hate to admit that, but when you only have Sharpe's support paying into it.
Tiffany's just started, right, they just started writing us a check this last year.
No, they've never wrote us a check, I thought, they've never wrote us a check. No, no.
I checked with her, and she said we got so much done.
That one, it never came.
I'll go back and see her again, cause they are supposed to give us three dollars a week.
All right, jail is on page twenty-nine.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
What are your plans, I know you touched on this before, for the sheriff's sale fees and costs down to two percent?
One that we transferred out of.
It's almost seventy thousand.
Yeah, we just transferred, it should be seventy thousand.
He's transferred money out of it.
Just transferred about eight thousand, or six thousand, six thousand, just transferred six thousand here last week. Yeah, we just transferred money out there. We got our, works on those.
Well, and I hope that we can transfer, I think that's, it's a college from a page. I don't, I think when I checked, that cannot go to a general fund. Maybe that we can, can you help them?
They are, they're the whole, they're the whole.
Yeah. So I think you guys made a motion to, go ahead.
These are last needs.
Yeah. I think we transferred six thousand, I think we lost.
All right, we're ready to move on.
Yes.
Yep. Anything here, John?
I put in for a thousand all rates for the jailers, you know, just across the board, and I'm gonna deal with that, just kind of deal with it. I would like to keep Matt Decker, he is the new jail commander. He is running the jail pretty much, he worked in Hamilton County for a long time, and then I want to take the jail out of my deputy's hands, so they can go out and do what they really need to do, cause it takes a lot of time. I'd like to keep him, if you cut a thousand, I'd like to keep him at a thousand, as a five hundred dollars, as a incentive to step up, cause he's putting in more hours a week now, he's staying over and stuff like that, and he does do, and quite the overtime work. But, one thing I'd like to do, you have a cook, that's talking about going part-time, would like to go part-time possibly. And what I'd like to do with the cooks, there's gonna be five part-time cooks to help run the jail, she still wants to stay part-time, I'd like to take her, her full-time position and put that into the secretary's position. Cause when she goes part-time, we don't need that money, all that money in the cook's position. She makes, I think, more than some of the deputies.
Hold on, you guys stop.
Absolutely.
Okay. Our, our full-time cooks want you to go part-time. We're not wanting to ask for any more money, she obviously makes a lot, she makes about thirty-three thousand. What we're wanting to do is take, what a strike in general would make, which is twenty-five over sixty-four, I believe, and create a full-time secretary's position. Take the remaining of that money and put it into part-time cook, we're not asking for any more money, we're just asking for the money to be shifted. But if you choose not to do that for us, we don't want our full-time cook taken away.
Yeah, but you're actually telling us that you can maintain on five part-time cooks, though.
Yeah, she's full-time right now, and.
But I can't maintain on a part-time secretary.
Yeah, that's the hard part.
So you can maintain on five part-time cooks.
What was that key?
You have, we were trying to talk an hour and a day. Cook.
Twelve hours a day.
Yep, you have two cooks during, for twelve hours a day, so you have twenty-four hours of pay to the cooks.
So, one cook, twelve hours.
What about the second person? How much, how much secondary help?
Well, just to cover this, Jim, what I figured out is it's four hours per meal.
How much?
Figured four hours per meal, per cook. You have three meals, it's twelve hours, is what they would use. Times three hundred and sixty-five. Cause you got a cook, every day, three meals.
Right. As far as pay, there's times you have two cooks in there.
No, never.
No? So you only need twelve hours covered, it could be a full-time person for eight, and a part-time for four.
That's what we do now.
It could be three, four hours, but you, you need twelve hours of service, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Right. That's what we're, that's what we're looking at there. Cause Linda usually, when she works her full-time, she's four days on, she works breakfast, lunch, for four straight days, and then evening, a part-timer comes in, so.
So you never have two at the same time?
No.
How many chambers, Robert?
Working. What's our next, oh, jail supplies, prisoner supplies. Put in for twenty thousand there. And I don't have last year's, so I don't, probably close to what we have for last year. And you got utility services, and waste removal, which we're saving a little money there, but we're putting fifty-two five. And then repair maintenance of the building, which is very extensive, we're putting fifty-two five there. Just boil hot water here, it costs ten thousand dollars, the jail. Have it installed. I think our medical and dental is about the same. An eighty, and prisoner meals a kid. And with prisoners, the prisoners up, it runs higher, and we're back up to about thirty-eight right now.
Today.
Today.
You said we had fourteen full-time jail staffs. Any part-time?
What's happening with the utilities, that they're increasing so much?
It was, I think, what we asked for last year, you guys cut us out to thirty or something, maybe, is that close?
We spent thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight thousand in thousand eleven.
Yeah, sure, you guys cut us back a little bit, everything's going up. Like Christine, why everything seems to go up. And the more people we have, you gotta realize, we're using a lot of our stuff. And I guess we're pretty safe to say, we've averaged about forty-eight days since middle of last year, not first part of last year. On average.
Do you count, do you count meals, or night time, or?
I count on meals, when I went through and got our average of forty-one, count how many meals we serve a day, which is a hundred point three. On the average, I mean, that's for average, we're served at least a hundred point three meals a day, so you take that out. Forty-one a day. Actually, Carson, actually went through book and counted every number that they fix meals for, first of all, it's the last time I came in and told you that. So we gotta do it.
You know, if there's any possible way, I know you have to do some trimming, but on inmate supplies, jail supplies, and repair maintenance equipment, and meals, I'm, I'm asking, try, I, we never ask for a lot, more than we know we're gonna have to use. And last year, I know you guys know this, but what I asked for, you guys cut me, cut him, and then we ended up having to come back and ask for the remainder. And pretty much have it down to what we're gonna need for supplies, inmate supplies, and to supply to jail, repair maintenance equipment.
But sometimes, that's an exercise, it just has to happen, because we have so many budgets to get into a certain amount, and we know that you're forced into an additional appropriation. But if we said, we're gonna give you the fifty thousand on day one, and you still need sixty, you're gonna come back anyway. So at least, if we go through August, and, you know, somewhere in there, and then you've got some history that you can save, that we're gonna project out, and we need the sixty. But if we, if you ask for fifty, and we gave you forty-five, and have to come back, you've got some time under your belt. So, but we've gotta balance everybody, so everybody has to participate a little bit.
I understand, but I, you know, we have a lot of accounts, I didn't ask for it at all counts, I asked for it just with you, but I know for sure we will need that money.
Yeah.
And, you know, as an elected official, you know, I want to come back and ask for more money.
But also, if you had a contract, there's a lot of, our departments have contracts for a cop here, and it's three thousand dollars. So, we don't reduce that, cause we know that's a fixed number. Can you tell me how many prisoner meals you're gonna serve? You can't, so you, we could take a stab, and if we gave you seventy, and you spent fifty, then we appropriated twenty-two months that we could've used somewhere else. If we give you fifty, and you need seventy, then in July, August, we're able to see that and move ahead. It's, that's a nebulous number.
No, it's, I mean, it's not, I mean, to you it is, to me it's not, I've been right for ten years, so, just in those accounts.
Pretty good.
It's not, I mean, I know exactly what, how much toilet paper I'm gonna need, and I just, I just, I, those were the only two I asked.
If it was that easy.
And those just two counts, not all of them I asked either.
It's, Zita's pretty good on numbers, I'd say like, what we asked for last year, she had it figured out, and of course, when the year came, we had to come back and ask for that extra money than we asked for last year.
Well.
And I hate to come back in here and ask, so that's one thing I don't like to do.
When we, when we look at the general fund, and I don't know what this year's numbers look like, but historically, we have to cut from what was requested, we've done two nights, we usually have to cut seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars. Where we're gonna get it. So if ten of it's your meals on day one, that might be where ten of it comes from, but, I mean, it's usually seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars of what people have asked for, so.
And the other thing, as far as like, elected official coming back, you know, like Jason, he probably doesn't ever come back, or there's some, because their budgets are so small, that they just, they, I mean, you know, you have a good handle on this budget, but they, there's a rock solid, there's no variance at all, but, but so, it's probably always gonna be the case.
The board doesn't know that, they maybe see that he's coming back and asking for more.
Right, you're right, and it's, Rocky Sheriff was one, has a tradition, came back more than anybody.
Well, changes daily on common events, I mean, that plays a big part in my budget, it does.
If we give you what you asked for for gasoline, for the cars, and gas prices double, are you gonna come back?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we gave you what you asked for, so that matters, you know, so those things that you can't control, we can't control.
Well, it, it needs accounts, I mean, we do have a bit of a control, just because there's no way we can hold, we can't, we can't house sixty inmates, it's impossible. I know how many we can. I know how many we can physically house without having a lawsuit on our hands. So, it is, it is a controlled, I mean, we know we can only have so many inmates, period. So, in a way, it is a control. And I understand what you're saying about gas, about, you know, I understand that, and you're absolutely right, but as, as far as, as the inmates we're gonna have in there for the year, we can put a max on that, and no.
It's a good goal.
I don't want to do that either. I don't wanna max out the inmates, cause I'm gonna send them out to third by all today.
All right, any questions about the jail?
Ask a deputy guy or anything like that.
If, if you do the staffing change that might occur, full-time cook going part-time, part-time secretary becoming full-time, how about insurance, things like that? Is there any other benefits that need to be adjusted? Have you already done that?
We don't, I don't deal with the insurance part of it.
With them too, but in the general picture, we have to look at that.
Right, you guys do, yeah, absolutely.
Will this person require insurance if we make it full-time? Do you have to offer it? I can't say who's taking it, I mean, you know, whatever's happened, but-
Well, I think, I don't know what the cook's on, whether it'll be a single plan, a family plan. But I think if the full-time secretary would become full-time, it's just a single plan.
And you're just, cause she-
You'd probably save money on that if she's, the other one's on a family plan.
But she's gonna be going off, she should be part-time, and you won't be eligible. So it's kind of a, wouldn't it be a wash?
Wash of her, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, we don't, we don't see those bills, but, but it's like, if somebody said, I'm gonna hire ten full-time people, that could affect insurance, you know, so-
That's a security cut.
It's, it's a trickle-down, you know.
Do you have any other questions regarding it? How probable is this?
Well, you know, we have, we have no idea where our revenues are right now, so it's, it's way early. About October, the, you know, we meet on the tenth and eleventh, and we finalize on the fifteenth, maybe the fourteenth. So, I can give you the exact date. We meet for meeting, our regular council meeting, October sixteenth. And that's when we will totally glass and finalize the budget.
We meet again then, before then?
We do.
We meet again before then? Tuesday?
Our, our regular meeting's Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, and then in, in October, we're gonna meet full days for October the tenth and eleventh, which is a Wednesday, Thursday. So, we'll be calling.
Is it during daytime or night?
All day.
It's the one that you've been, John, it's the one that you've been-
Right, I'll break them with it in there.
Write that down. Wednesday the tenth, Thursday the eleventh.
Oh, don't make me mad, okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
You get that sheriff sergeant, what's that for day?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're gonna kick a day off.
No, she won't have a day off.
All right, we just have a couple. Rainy day in county council. The rainy day is on page, it's in that little clip, it's all sorts in the back, third from the back. Is that health, yeah, third from the back, third from the back now. Ray, I don't think about this.
The, if you look at the, the first entry for joint dispatch, technically, Chuck gave us the printout today, the county would be on the hook for about two hundred and twelve thousand. So it's a matter of where we're gonna find it. In the general fund, or rainy day, or a combination thereof. So he, he gave us that spreadsheet that had its color, and he broke it like this. He broke it into the user fees for your landline and, and your cellphone, about the, the two twenty-seven, and then he's asking for three hundred and twelve, six twenty, to make his budget complete. So out of the three twelve, six twenty, a hundred comes from the city. So if we didn't touch anything in there, we need to appropriate two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty. On the ambulance piece that we had in there, the figure that right now the EMS board was comfortable with, with the four providers and the services that we've done over the past three years, the request that SEALs had to increase their contract by twenty-five thousand, that would put the total EMS budget at two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Two fifty-seven.
What is SEAL's contract?
A hundred and fifty right now. And, you know, the commissioners put that two thirty-two in, in their budget in the general fund also. So we're seeing it twice.
So that can drop us down from six, six, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand to four seventy. I recommend this for now, just leasing it in the rainy day fund.
What's our balance? We, we don't, we also appropriate some out.
We've gotta watch that, maybe by October, when we make, make that decision then, because we've gotta look at where we're gonna be with all that nine hundred one hundred coming out. You know, Jack gives that sheet, I didn't bring mine, neither have springers. And it let it show us for our, cause the balance that we have on this sheet, that we've got of all refunds, is not gonna be hard.
Right, so we anticipate-
Is it a hundred, is it a hundred and some, or is it two hundred thousand?
I thought it was about a hundred and thirty some, but maybe-
A hundred and thirty? Somewhere, over a hundred.
It's the rest of the year.
Yeah, yeah, so I, maybe, you know, in our next meeting, we'll, we need, in October, we can-
Or maybe we do a little bit of each.
I mean, we can move it around at that point, but-
It, it all depends on, it all depends on what the general fund looks like.
At some point, I mean, it'd be great if we could not spend rainy day. I mean, because it's savings. So, I, I think that's the goal we gotta look at. Whether we can make it happen or not, we'll find out.
Okay, let's take a look at- County Council, what?
Page fourteen.
Who did this?
Who asked somebody to do it? Did you say better spot?
What's that, what's that tax cap loss?
Yeah.
That what?
Tax cap loss.
Tax cap loss.
I didn't put that in there before.
I do.
Is it separate right there?
Cindy, that is.
But why, why would we spend that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Well, and we adopted Lloyd to compensate for some of that. I just assure you, I did not put that in. I'm going to do it then.
I want to investigate that, I'll ask Jackie, because I, I know she told me to add that. There was a reason that she had. I can't explain it.
Um, let's see. I, at that time, I didn't know where her cellphone, that line of her cellphone was. I did increase the travel conference instead. Maybe we'll have three new, um, council members, or maybe we'll do some, go to some conferences, or maybe in their limited transition.
Anything else?
I'm okay with all of it, except the last line.
I'll find out what, I'll find out what that's for. I honestly don't know.
If, if you get a definition, can you email that out?
Yeah.
I'd be glad.
Okay. Well, I, I would, I mean, if we're accounting for a, a loss, we wouldn't spend it. So, if, if it was something we need somebody to do, it'd be like outside professional services, or something along that line.
Okay. Is there any other business to talk about?
We need to set a date, um, before October first, for the, for the, uh, non-binding, uh, review. And, we have to advertise that. That puts us real close to like twenty.
I don't think you have to do it today, so I mean, you can advertise it.
A separate meeting?
We, we need, we have to have, we have to have those, October first is the drop dead date, to have the non-binding reviews done.
Can I hear that, Ashley?
I think you have to advertise it.
Yeah, I think it's not advertised, I mean, they got, they got it.
Mar?
Mar.
Starting the meeting tomorrow?
But is that, is that a, that's not, is that? How long special week is that, forty-eight hours? Or is it, county council, I don't know. Forty-eight hours, but-
We, we did at least one time, we did it after our meeting.
At one time, we did it at the end of one of our regular meetings.
That would be good, if we could do it.
Yeah, yeah, we said at the end, we just kinda went through. I'd go for that, instead of a separate meeting.
I mean, it's, it has to be advertised, I mean, we don't have to get rid of those, we just have to notify the paper.
And at our meeting on Tuesday, that, that company is gonna take about an hour for a presentation, so we better, if we're gonna do it, I'm fine with that, but we better plan on being here for a while.
And what's the presentation?
It's the company that said was presenting the jails and courthouse renovation projects.
They were asked to keep it to about an hour. They, they took it, they took two days to present, uh, a slide program, and then, that was on one day, just showing the areas of the courthouse and the jail that need to be renovated. And then they spent a seven-day discussing financing. They did a quick run-through on those slide program, and talked about financing, and the bond issue, or whatever it would take to, um, get the ball rolling on either a renovation with an addition to the jail, or a complete rebuild of a jail on, on a different site, and the cost and benefits of those two different approaches. And it, it took probably a total of four hours. They were then asked to condense it into an hour presentation for, for the council.
I think boys haven't do that.
Rabbit. They basically repeated the first night on the second night.
They did, so.
Yeah.
And then just add the money.
Does anybody have a problem with that? Extra longer meeting? Look at that stuff, have any, Madonna, you okay?
Yeah, we could, we have it early. Why can't we have it before?
You have several, what kind of meetings?
Start earlier? All right, Nate?
Same review?
I'm off all day, six o'clock.
Uh, we've advertised, the meeting starts at, in the paper.
But not, not writing a review piece?
No. Is that required? I don't know, I, I'm the newbie.
Yeah, I think we could call special meetings for, for public nervous.
Okay. Just give it to the back, to the paper. So? What time? Thank you, I'm sorry. Whatever works.
Hopefully six, maybe better start at six rather than seven.
That's just next.
All right, so if we can do that regularly, it's good, it's fine, that'll make sixty. Yeah, I, I don't think it takes over after this.
Yeah, but we have the sixteen-line statements. We looked at what they projected, to see if they could fund it. And if they did, we recommended that they use something, if they did. So it's a matter of making sure we have both those things. So, other than-
That's reading something down there.
It's on that binding and not binding.
We got tests on this.
I think they already did a special, a special meeting, I don't see, because the, the units themselves have advertised their actual hearings. So, I don't see anything in here that says that we have to do that, Sunday goes.
Right, it's the way we've done it, pass.
So we're gonna meet at five?
Six.
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 Okay, I'll, I'll, okay, there's a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
All right.
Say.